Notice is hereby given that a meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole will be held on Thursday, September 8th, 2022 at 6:00 PM in person at City Council Chambers, 93 Washington Street, second floor and via remote participation in accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022. For the purpose of discussing Salem Housing Roadmap, A Housing Plan for All, and Affordable Accessory Dwelling Unit Report to Council. In-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, and the public may also participate, listen, and/or view this meeting while in progress via the remote participation platform Zoom through any one of the following ways. Please click on the link found in the agenda, password 440219, or phone 877-853-5257, or 888-475-4499. The webinar ID is 876-64311732. The subcommittee meetings are held to take action for the purpose of making recommendations to the full council. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so on matters not requiring a public hearing, we will post on the City of Salem's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. The City Council Committee of the Whole met in City Council Chambers on September 8th, 2022, at 6:00 PM for the purpose of discussing #395 Salem Housing Roadmap and #523 Affordable Accessory Dwelling Unit Report to Council. Notice of this meeting was posted on August 25th, 2022, at 10:15 AM. Absent is none. All members are here. Council Dominguez is joining us remotely. So all votes will be done by roll call. So, the first thing we're going to take up is the Salem Housing Roadmap. And just to remind people where we left off. In the fall of 2021, the City of Salem kicked off a planning process to develop the Salem Housing Roadmap, A Housing Plan for All. The Housing Roadmap is intended to serve as the City of Salem's housing production plan, a state-recognized planning tool that assists municipalities in identifying the location, type, and pace of affordable housing development. The roadmap has been guided by a steering committee comprised of city councilors, members of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, the Planning Board, Housing Authority, Board of Health, Redevelopment Authority, Salem for All Ages, Public Schools, Council on Aging, and Affordable Housing Finance Professionals. And through the efforts of this group, 500 points of community participation happened through interviews, through meetings in a box, paper surveys, forums. We met originally on this on July 14th with the Planning Board in a meeting that had severe sound issues, and I apologize for that. And so both groups did not take a vote at that time, went back to our meetings, this is our second meeting now on this topic, to further clarify any points from the reports, to get questions answered, and to then hopefully decide to send this back to the council where we will vote on it to approve the plan. And that's what we're doing with the plan, is we're approving it. We're not necessarily setting up any priorities or how the council will be working in the future. This is our roadmap for any further work that we want to do, work with the planning department or planning board on, but this is really just how the city's going to move forward with housing issues in the next couple of years. So with that, I'm going to ask Amanda Chancola from the Planning Board, who is here with us today, along with Dominic Pangallo from the Mayor's Office. Sorry about that, should have introduced you two. So Amanda, if you want to come up to the microphone and we can start any questions or comments from members of the council. And if you'd like to start by saying anything, that's fine, too.
All right. I think you gave a great overview of it, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Counselor Cohen?
No?
No. Okay. Anyone with comments? Amanda, I'll start, then. Just one kind of quick question, which I think everyone is wondering from this. It's a very thorough report, obviously. If you were to take a few minutes and kind of say what you think the city should be focused on in the next couple of years, it would have the biggest bang for the buck, considering the money from the ARPA funds that are being used to kind of boost housing efforts in a lot of different directions, what do you think would be the best use of people's time?
So, there's no easy or silver bullet here. I think it takes a lot of approaches, but as you'll see in the plan, I think that, you know, the key things that kept coming up are supply and stability. And so it's ensuring that we have housing stability for the residents who are here and that they're not displaced, but also creating more housing. We just don't have enough options. And so it's really those two things, and I'm sorry, that's not a single thing. And there's a whole bunch of different strategies that can be applied to both of those categories.
Is there a particular income level that's hurting more than others at this time?
The extremely low and very low income have always had the most challenge in time finding housing and remaining in their homes, but it really goes across the board. Moderate-income households are also struggling. It's just the extremely low and very low have, you know, there are fewer options available.
Okay. And then, not diminishing it, historically, that's been the case.
Correct.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Hepworth?
Thank you, Madam President. Amanda, I know you and I have discussed, well, this report recommends looking at inclusionary zoning again, I know something you and I have talked about. Can you talk through some of the state guidelines around that and how that would impact it? We went pretty exhaustively through this as a council, maybe twice, I can't remember at this point, but just as far as what's changed since then?
So, the Section 3A of the Mass General Law has been revised, and that's the section that regulates zoning. And it now requires MBTA communities to have multifamily housing by right, and the size and the unit capacity of that district varies, community to community, but every MBTA community has to have housing by right. And they define by right as being not a special permit process, and one of the requirements is that, you know, it has to actually allow housing. And so the Department of Housing and Community Development recently issued updated guidelines, and in those guidelines, it defines by right as, it notes that inclusionary housing ordinance is allowed, but if that inclusionary zoning ordinance, well, it says inclusionary housing is allowed for up to 10% of the units at 80% of the area median income. So basically, what they're saying is housing is not considered by right if you require more than 10% of the units to be affordable or deeper than 80% area median income. And that's a really high look at the guidelines. There hasn't been a Q&amp;A on the guidelines yet. The Department of Housing and Community Development did have a webinar today, but they didn't entertain questions there, so we were not able to ask about density bonuses and that sort of thing. So it's, a lot of things are still being worked out and we're learning more about it, but I would recommend holding off on inclusionary until we make sure that it complies with Section 3A. If we do not comply, then we are at risk for not being eligible for some grants, including Mass Works.
Okay.
Thanks, Amanda. So it's fair to say that the intent from the state is to make sure that communities aren't using inclusionary zoning to keep out affordability or to stop development, but then in communities like Salem, where we have the right intentions, I think, to, and we're looking at something like 60% and 12%, or 60% and 10%, that that would, as of right now, we don't think that would be, that could potentially not be possible. Is there a path forward that you could see, or would it just be something like, I don't know if you know the answer to this, it would be a home rule petition, or I'm just curious as to what those paths look like?
We haven't seen a path forward yet. I'm looking forward to having conversations with the Department of Housing and Community Development to understand what that is. As you all are aware, we worked really hard on that inclusionary housing ordinance, and it was important to make sure that housing would still be feasible. The last thing we wanted to do was stifle development, and that's why we went through this really robust pro forma analysis. And I hope that we'll be able to share that with the state to show that we feel confident our proposed ordinance would still allow multifamily development, because that's important in Salem.
Thank you.
Counsel, Counsel McCarthy?
Thank you, Madam President. Quick question, Amanda. You just touched on MBTA communities and the zone. Would that be within certain distance of like the train, train stops, ferries? So we'd have to create, I know we talked about this once before, and is it within like a mile of the train station? And then there was a whole bunch of questions about where the mile started and whether or not it reached a circumference, and there was a whole bunch of weird questions, but would it clearly define, like if we were to add a second stop, like near Salem State, that would be, whatever we try to adopt would also have to include another zone near that stop as well?
Only one district is required.
Only one.
And so even for communities that have multiple train stops, for example, they can have one district that covers the entire city. They don't have to have multiple districts, they have multiple stops. They just need to show that their unit capacity meets whatever the requirement is based on the formula.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel Merkel?
Thank you. So just for clarity and better understanding of what you said, so I am familiar with that, you know, what the state change is on, near transportation. So if we satisfied that requirement in the downtown train station, then we wouldn't have to do it on the additional train station. We wouldn't have that requirement there? Is that what you said?
That is correct.
Okay. That's interesting. Thank you.
And the city did receive, is going to be receiving technical assistance from MHP on their model to determine whether we're in compliance, and this is, we're one of the early communities to test out their compliance models. And so we should know within the next couple months whether we appear to be in compliance.
Anyone else? Seeing none. I will take a motion on this. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on the housing production plan? No? Okay. I don't think so. I will take a motion. Counsel McCarthy?
I make a motion to send the plan to the full council with a positive recommendation.
Counsel McCarthy moves to send this back to the council with a positive recommendation, seconded by Counsel Hepworth. And, let's see. I will do a roll call vote. Counsel Dominguez, I just want to make sure that you're good on questions.
Yes, I'm good.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
All right. Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Dominguez?
Yes.
Counsel Hepworth?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Prozinski?
Yes.
Counsel Ricardi?
Yes.
Counsel Varela?
Yes.
Counsel Watsonville?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. The matter carries 11 to 0. Okay. Item number two is the ADU ordinance, the Affordable Accessory Dwelling Unit Report from the Planning Department.
Is it possible to share the presentation? I don't have internet service on my computer, so I'm not sure how to do that.
You don't have service?
No, it's not.
Yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Make a motion for a one-minute recess?
Can I see some hands on that? Great. We are going to take a one-minute recess to get this set up. Thank you. Okay, and we are back. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to share this report. There's a letter in your package, and this presentation just goes through the items in that letter. Next slide, please. So when the ordinance was adopted in April of 2021, the council also adopted an order for staff to report back how many ADUs have been created, and then a summary of parking issues and any other issues. And so that's what this report is. Next slide, please. So the timeline here just shows the number of permits that have been applied for. The "applied for" is the latter ones. In 2018, the Accessory Living Area Ordinance was adopted, and then in 2021, the ordinance that we have today is adopted, and that's the one that we're focusing on. So since then, eight building permit applications have been submitted. Of those eight, six were approved, and two are currently under review by the Building Today, staff has not received any complaints or concerns regarding parking or other matters regarding ADUs, but we have received comments regarding potential barriers, and we have had, we have some observations about potential barriers. And so since we have this report in front of you today, I'd like to take the opportunity to just share with you what I've heard, and hopefully, members of the public will also have an opportunity to share their experiences with the ordinance. So there are four key areas that I've heard, and the first one is the bedroom restriction, you can go on. The bedroom restriction, and this came directly from the Housing Roadmap, that was the first item on this agenda. So the way I'm going to go through each of these is the purpose, which is why it was included in the ordinance, what the concern is, and then what staff's recommendation is, if staff has a recommendation. So the purpose of the bedroom restriction was to ensure that the affordable units will be accessory to the main home. But the concern that came up in the Housing Roadmap is that has potential to have a discriminatory effect, because it has a disparate impact toward families with children, which is a protected class. Next slide, please. So in the ordinance, there are four additional criteria listed under Section 3.2, .8, .5. Those are the letters of the ordinance that also address making sure that the unit is accessory to the main home. So that includes limiting the size of the accessory dwelling unit to 900 square feet, ensuring that the accessory dwelling unit doesn't exceed 50% of the gross floor area of the main dwelling, so it's always going to be less than half of the size, or 900 square feet, whichever is less. It has to be clearly subordinate in use, size, and design, and it has to be capable of being discontinued as a separate dwelling without demoing structural components of the principal dwelling. So with all of those four, staff would recommend removing the bedroom restriction, removing that it's limited to two bedrooms, because in staff's recommendation, it's, we can meet the purpose through these other four requirements, and we want to make sure that it doesn't result in a disparate impact. It's up to you.
Do you want to take questions on that? Go ahead. If you have a question, that's fine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you two. I guess my question would be, it says it would be, shall not exceed the 50% of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, and then it's further restrictions address the fact that it could result in desperate families with children, and I get all that, but my question is if you have a three-bedroom house and you divide it up, and now you put in two, now you have two bedrooms in the accessory unit, and there's only two bedrooms in the main unit, how is it less, how is it less of an impact where it's, now it's the same, basically, it's the same amount of bedrooms in both, where it should be, in the way it's written now, up there, it's supposed to be half. So I guess, it's just a curious question.
Yeah, so the accessory dwelling unit would still not, it's not allowed to be more than half of the size, and so if you had a thousand-square-foot home in the accessory dwelling unit, the maximum would be 500 square feet. So even if you had two bedrooms in both homes, the accessory unit's still only half the size.
So it's dependent upon size, not dependent upon use? Because the bedrooms would be the use. And a bedroom is by state statute required to be X amount of square feet and have a closet. So, I mean, there's certain rules, building-wise, to meet requirements to be a bedroom, so...
Yeah, there are health code requirements for the bedroom size, and I think it's unlikely you would get more than two bedrooms in the 900 square feet anyway, but to ensure that we don't have a disparate impact, we'd still recommend just removing the two-bedroom.
Right. Thank you.
Anyone else before we move on? Counsel Watsonville?
Thank you, President Murillo. Just a quick question, and I'm not sure if you can answer it. Is there a standard square footage around what we would consider to be micro units? And what those standards are?
I can look into that and find out for you.
I had a feeling it might be. Sorry. I appreciate that. Thanks, Amanda.
Okay.
The next item is owner occupancy, and this is a requirement that at least one of the owner, at least one owner of residence lives in either the primary home or the accessory dwelling as their primary home, as their primary place of residence. And that has a whole bunch of definitions in there of what primary residence is. The purpose here was, there was a concern around absentee landlords, and particularly with investors acquiring properties and not taking care of them, resulting in neighborhood concerns. So it was brought, the concern, and why I'm bringing this to your attention is because we've heard from residents that, or a resident, particularly a builder, that they are not able to create accessory dwelling units in new construction. So think of, a new subdivision is built, and a builder is building homes that somebody else will then buy, that builder can add an ADU in that home because they're not the primary owner. But the intent of the ordinance is to enable housing production, and so staff doesn't have a recommendation here, but I wanted to bring it to your attention for your discussion.
I have a couple of questions on this. So, one is the owner, has to be the person who is living there, and according to the purchase, the holder of the title of the property. Homes sometimes are bought in trusts, right? Where, for all intents and purposes, the owner is the person living there, but the name on the deed is a trust. How does that, how would that hold things up?
We would need to see the trust documents that show that the owner is on that trust.
Okay. All right. That's fine. The second thing is, when the builder is building this new home with an ADU, what is it that they can't do? Can they not get it certified as an ADU? Can they not advertise it as a single-family home with a built-in ADU? What is, what is the holdup, I guess? What's the break that's being put on?
My understanding is it wouldn't be permitted to build the ADU if the, if a property owner, if the owner doesn't live there.
So they could, okay, so right now, they could build something that could, that could be used as an ADU, they just can't put in the kitchen equipment, for example, and sell it that way?
Yeah, so a single-family home could be built, and they could create the shell that could be converted into an ADU, so have it essentially ADU-ready, and then when the primary owner purchases the property and moves in, would be able to do it, would be able to add, pull a permit and then add an ADU.
I mean, I'm not, I'm having trouble with a builder building a new home with an ADU, and how that's different from an owner who has built an ADU selling it. Like, I, it's just my, yeah. Counsel Cohen?
Thank you, Madam President. So, I look at it like, having it ADU-ready would be fine, because theoretically, someone's going to move in and potentially use it, because the way the ADU is written is you can't have unique utilities. So, I actually feel like if someone sells, you know, builds a building, new building, and then sells it, the only way that the new owner can utilize it as an ADU is for them to live in the property, in either space. I'm more concerned personally with someone building an ADU, currently owner-occupying the building, and at some point moving, you know, maybe they're retired or something else, and, you know, just moving out of the building. And so I was thinking that a way to accommodate that would be to have some kind of timetable where they could build the ADU, it could exist as an ADU, and then after so much time, it could be a, you know, ADU that does not require owner occupancy.
Just a follow-up there. So we don't do any sort of checking when a home with an ADU is sold, that the new owner is going to be living there, correct?
Correct.
Anyone else? Counsel Merkel?
If I understand it correctly, I would, I'm certainly comfortable with a builder building it with an ADU, because won't it cover the owner-occupied requirement, whoever buys it has to live there to operate the ADU there, correct? So you still have that protection of owner-occupied if the builder builds it with a complete ADU, correct? Am I correct in that?
I guess that depends on who the buyer is. You know, somebody could buy the property that does not intend to live there.
And then they just couldn't use it as an ADU?
Correct. Yeah, so that could happen. They could buy the property, and then they're not allowed to use the ADU. The enforcement will be through complaints, and most often, you would never even know that the ADU's being used or that it's even there. I mean, they're very small units, they blend in with the neighborhood, so most often, you wouldn't even know.
Yeah. For that reason, I'd be comfortable with being allowed to build the ADU, so the option is there, if someone who buys it wants to use it as an ADU.
Thank you. Counsel McCarthy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. I guess, I put my builder hat on for one second. You're not allowed to have two kitchens in our, in our single-family home. So that's why you would, if someone was going to get an inspection, that's why they wouldn't be able to get one. Because you basically have to take the stove out of the ADU. As far as being a builder, I think that when you look at it, if I'm going to build a house, new construction, with construction costs the way they are, in order to include what potentially is a second unit in a single-family home, it's just going to make, A, it's going to make that house more marketable, but it's also going to make it more valuable. And it's going to be more valuable, because the potential is they're going to market it as a way for you to recover rental at, you know, at a minimal, you know, at a minimal cost to help offset the cost of buying a home. But you're also escalating the value of the house. So the whole, when we looked at ADUs, the intent was someone, in my opinion, the intent was someone who was house-rich and cash-poor would have the ability, say like an empty nester or someone who'd been in their house for a long time who didn't want to sell or didn't want to move, because they liked living in the neighborhood, they liked where they were, but they had a large family home that they could easily section off a piece of, and then put it, market it as an ADU to supplement income and to have someone living in the house with them. Now, to open up the door to allow a builder, and I'm sure I'm going to have here from a few of my builder friends, in order to start from scratch and incorporate an ADU into it, I'm sure that there's someone that's going to want to buy it, but now you've, now you've created a situation where someone is house-rich, well, house- you've created a situation where someone is house-rich, or house-poor, and every other which way, because now you've created a house that is going to be marketed for even more of money than it's, would be worth, worth than if it was a single-family home. And now, you've basically created what's like, just short of a two-family home in an R1, right off the bat. And then, as you just said, if, you know, after, after home is sold with an ADU in it, we don't track what happens to them. So who's to say that, you know, someone doesn't buy this single-family home and start renting out both sides? So, for me, that's, it comes with no recommendation, but it needs a little more thought before we want to jump down that road, because we, I understand it in existing construction, but new construction, you know, with a vacant house lot in an R1 development, that's kind of a, could be a tough sell. That's just, that's just me looking at it real quick. Thanks.
Counsel Watsonville.
Thanks. What is your name? President Marcello? I'm sorry, my brain was spinning about this. I'm also comfortable theoretically with the idea, theoretically, right, with the idea of building a new construction and putting in, you know, what we might otherwise call an in-law apartment, right, an ADU. I think that the intent behind this was about property management, and the way, behavior, right, of the use of those spaces would affect the neighborhood. And so if there's some way for us to tease apart that, and say like, and say like, we believe that the ability to create this, despite all of those hairy little matters that, that the Ward 1 councilor identified, can be built, right, because the housing's important, but somehow still require that the use remain, the ADU used by whoever is living there. Like, I don't know how to have our cake and eat it too in this scenario. But again, like, you know, I just, I think it, I think it comes down to the effect on the neighbors, and that's the concern, and that's the intent. So if we can somehow focus on like that as the intent, and less about, I think it sounds like we're all pretty, not all of us, I don't want to speak for the body, but, but there's a sense of like, yeah, no, building new construction with an ADU component makes sense for the purpose, ownership transfers, but it really comes down to that, the nut lives in that moment of like, what actually happens, right? So somehow needing to, whether it may be a matter of additional enforcement, or like an additional inspections, or whatever the case may be, because I think what we're trying to avoid is, someone builds this, someone sells this, it's an absentee landlord, both sides are rented, one gets converted to, you know, a short-term rental, and now you've got people cycling through, and there's just no, and the burden falls on the neighbors, right, to police it, to police the matter. So, I'm just offering that, because I do think it requires a little more, a little more thought in teasing, we may need to just tease this one apart a bit. Any comment on that? Yeah, please.
Yeah, thank you. These are all great thoughts, and I appreciate all your input on this. I first want to respond to the increased value, and an accessory dwelling unit will increase the value of the home, but I also think about it as it may increase the value of the home by $100,000, which is a lot of money. But you can't find a house in Salem for $100,000, and now you just created two homes, and for an additional value, but this could be for someone's family member, or a friend, or a colleague, or whoever it is that's going to live there. So, and the rent is capped at 70% of the fair market rent. Or, you know, most people rent it for free to a family member. In terms of the neighborhood concerns around absentee landlords, I guess I want to understand that more, what the concern, you know, when you have an absentee landlord, they're not taking care of the property, then you, you fall into problem properties. And we have a process for problem properties and how to handle that. So I'm wondering what other issues come out when an owner doesn't live at the property? Because most, again, most often, you don't know who's a renter and who's an owner, so what's the difference whether they own the property and then you have two renters in that home? And then, in terms of short-term rentals, we do have a good handle on that, because they are required to be registered, and we do scrub them. And so we have, you know, a list of accessory dwelling units, and those are prohibited from being short-term rentals, and we are, you know, reviewing short-term rentals. So that is one of the enforcements that I feel strongly that we do have a good handle on, but, but the other enforcement, I guess I, what would need to be enforced, is my question.
Counsel Cohen.
Go ahead.
I was going to say Counsel McLean had his hand up, and I'll go after him.
Counsel McLean.
Thank you, Madam President. I guess my thoughts are that, you know, this owner occupancy requirement was put in place because of these concerns around absentee landowners and investment capital in our housing market. And I remain far more concerned about the impact of those items on the city and our neighborhoods than I am about the barrier that this may create for developers and builders to create housing stock. I think, I think there is a qualitative difference between a landlord who lives in Florida and somebody who lives on the first floor of the home that you share with them. There's a different level of relationship that a tenant has with their landlord, there's a different understanding of that person's needs if they fall into difficulty. I've lived in homes like this, right, where you had either, you know, a landlord who understood that you were young and maybe just lost your job and was willing to work with you, or a landlord who was really elderly, and you were able to help them and, you know, mow the lawn and do those things. It's a totally different quality of neighborhood and of living in that situation. And, not for nothing, those are really difficult circumstances to control, I find, right? It's really hard for a municipality to put controls around what investment money is able to do. You show up with the money, you can do what you're going to do. If a property doesn't arise to the level of being a problem property, you can't really tell someone, okay, you're not allowed to own this building because you don't live here. So, I'm really disinclined to, to open the door to any more of that activity, because I think it's really hard to control when you do that. And realistically, I don't see this, I don't see this, this standard as a real barrier to a builder. I mean, a builder is going to find a way to say, I did everything that I possibly could to get this as close as possible to being an ADU while staying in compliance. The hookups are ready, I just didn't connect the service. But when you buy it, you can slap a wall right here, and you can put a stove right there, and you'll be good to go. Like, this is a highly solvable problem for a builder, so I'm not convinced that this is a necessary change at all.
Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, Counsel President Marcello. I agree a lot with both Councillors McCarthy and McLean. First of all, I want to state that I do not believe the city has adequately enforced the short-term rental ordinance, and it's almost absurd at the level of violation. And it's mostly people who are coming in, buying multifamily homes, not living in them, and turning them into virtual hotels. Second of all, problem properties, my street, Hancock Street, has about 40 houses on it. I have three problem properties. Two of them came in front of the city council several years ago, and the city council agreed. They were the only two houses that came up to the council to be, that would be eligible purchased, and so the city could actually purchase those homes. They didn't, one just burnt down. That property owner was sued, I think, three or four times by the city. The idea that we can adequately address the problem properties is not true. The other one is two doors down from me, the absentee landlord, it's probably a four-family, probably has five or six units selling, has been cited probably 50 or 60 times, and doesn't seem to really care about that, because the fine is not equal to what he's getting in additional rent. I want to specifically address what Counsel McLean said. So, I totally agree. I mean, my wife has a bed and breakfast, she lives in it. She's way better able to manage that property, she wants to, than someone who is not living in that, you know, whether it's a short-term rental or a single-family. Like, most people who rent a single-family, once they start renting other units and are not on the property, creates issues. And, and so, I think this is opening something up that we don't necessarily have to do. I think the intent of this ordinance in the beginning was exactly what Counsel McCarthy said, that people who want to stay in their property and maybe enable them to stay longer or whatever, and maybe have someone help them or whatever, and enable someone to maybe save some money, I think is still the intent that we should have going forward. And not necessarily to allow a builder who's building a new property to take advantage of this, because we have a zoning board of appeals, and that zoning board of appeals can be used to have units or spaces, dormers or whatever, added to a property by getting a special permit or variance. And so we already have a process for that. We don't have to enable a builder who's building a new property to build an ADU in a single-family home, that we don't have any way of enforcing going forward.
Anyone else? Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Marcello. Thanks, everyone, for all the excellent points. I just want to be, have my facts straight. So, if a builder builds a house with an ADU or the shell of an ADU ready to go, when he sells it, then does it have to be owner-occupied after, you know, after it's sold and the new owner, you know, moves in? Does it have to, for him to operate the ADU, whether it's fully established or partially established, does it have to be owner-occupied?
If the ADU is not established, then think of it as the builder received a permit for a single-family home and a finished basement. So there's no ADU in there, they didn't apply for an ADU, it's a single-family home, so it does not need to be owner-occupied. If the person who buys that home decides, I want to convert that basement into an ADU, then they have to pull, they would pull a permit, show that they live there, and move forward with the hookups.
Anyone else? Counsel Ricciardi.
Thank you. I agree with a lot of comments that were said. This is the one thing that doesn't hop out at me, is something that needs to be changed right away and is a hindrance. I do think that there was a specific scenario where this was an issue. I know in my ward, there are not a lot of new single-family homes being built, so, and I think that's the same in many wards around the area, except for perhaps those outside the downtown area. So, it's just not a huge concern, but my only comment is a builder can market a property any way they want to market the property. And they can market it with, hey, Salem does have this ADU process, once you buy it, I can help you. And if that's the desire, which I think would be great, then they can, there's a path forward, a path around this, other than us changing the owner occupancy requirement, which what I'm hearing is one that we want to keep around at least, you know, it might be a little too soon to change anything around those guidelines right now. If there was no path for that one scenario that we're talking about, then I would be a little more concerned, but the fact that there is a path, I'm not like, super concerned or want to jump on this one right away. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let's move on. Oh. Counsel Watsonville.
Thank you, President Marcello. I just want to agree with the Ward 6 councillor, and I also want to ask one more question. There have been other conversations in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board about making, you know, how to build out-of-a-box plans available, and even potentially financial incentives for folks who are homeowners, who may be, you know, who may be house-rich and cash-poor, to incentivize them to create one, some subsidy funding. Would that also address some of like, the concerns around, if there are concerns around the number of ADUs being built? And, you know, I just, I just feel like if there were some additional support, you know, maybe it's less about the building of new construction, and more about how do we get more of these built, in accordance with what's out there right now? Thanks.
Thank you for bringing that up. I am so happy to let you know, there is a grant program established that people can apply for. Homeowners can apply for this grant. It is, covers 50% of the cost of construction up to $45,000. This is super exciting. The property owner would need to put a restriction on the property that limits the rent to 50% of the fair market in return for these funds. As you're aware, the current ordinance is at 70% fair market rent. So, about $900 for an apartment, which is fantastic for Salem, great for the homeowner, let your friends and family and neighbors and everybody know about this grant. And if they have any questions, they can contact me.
One follow-on question, thank you. Is there a time restriction or expiry date on that, on that 50% restriction on the rental?
20 years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, next.
Detached structures is probably one of the more common questions I've received. I fielded quite a few calls in the beginning when this ordinance was first adopted, less now, but I think folks are aware that detached structure, new detached structures are not permitted. So, the section 3.2.8.5 says that affordable accessory dwelling units can be in an existing detached structure, that's existed as of April 2021 when the ordinance was adopted, but you cannot create a new detached structure. And the purpose was, neighborhood concern character is about building another home on the lot. And again, a few community members have reached out, and so again, I don't have a recommendation here, but I'm very interested in your thoughts and discussion on if you want to consider, make an amendment that would allow them or keep the ordinance the way it is.
Amanda, I'm curious, the questions that you got, were they around building a garage and including an ADU, or was it that they would like to build a completely separate building that's simply an ADU?
It was, I don't recall any with a, with an accessory, a different use and an ADU. The only calls I recall getting are separate detached structures, you know, someone, they refer to them as granny units.
Granny units, okay.
Granny flats, those pods.
Okay. And, so were they, I'm just curious, do you know if they were for family members?
Yes. The two people in the beginning were, there's a gentleman down on Juniper Point that is interested in creating one for rental property, not for a family member. There's another one off Highland Avenue, and I, I think that one was for a family member as well.
I'm just curious if this is, if this is because of the housing crunch and just trying to take care of family members, just, that was just my own curiosity. Any questions on this one? Counsel Posniewski.
Thank you, Madam President. To you, Amanda. Is there a grandfather clause on the separate structure? In other words, if somebody has an existing garage on their property, and now they want to change it and make an ADU upstairs in the garage, they're allowed to do that? Now, taking the fact that somebody is building a new piece of property, or they, or they actually have a piece of property and we don't allow a detached structure, but they apply for a permit under the guise of putting in a garage, with the intent later on to put an ADU above that garage, is there some kind of a, is there some kind of a mechanism to prevent people from kind of subverting it? In other words, they're going to say that I'm building this on my property, but in reality, they're not building that. They want to build the ADU, which is going to wind up being a separate structure.
Yeah, the existing ordinance defines existing structure as being in existence as of April 2021, April 20, as of the adoption of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. That is, thank you.
Counsel Hepburn.
Thank you, Madam President. I think the initial version of this ordinance allowed for detached structures, am I correct?
There was an ordinance proposed that allowed for detached, and at the same time, this one was submitted, that did not allow for detached.
Right. And I think that, that, that version stated it had to meet the underlying zoning. And when I look around Salem, I don't think there's that many locations that could, could add an ADU as a separate detached structure and meet the underlying zoning. And if there is, I guess, by my opinion, if there is, and they're meeting the underlying dimensional requirements, I don't see why saying housing is, disallowing housing is helping the city. I think that if there's a space that allows it, and they're meeting the underlying requirements, by my understanding, that should be something that a property owner should be allowed to do, and I'd certainly be happy to look at that. But I just wanted to just go back, back up a little bit and just look at what we initially submitted versus what, what came before the council and was passed. Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Varela.
Thank you, President Marcello. I would be in complete favor of this, only because our current building code, you need to be 40 feet away from the existing structure. So that does eliminate a lot of parcels here in Salem. So, you know, I really feel like this is reasonable, and obviously, this should have been adopted years ago, and it wasn't. So obviously, I would be in favor for this, because our underlying zoning would take care of issues of structures being too close to the primary structure. It's very hard to get a structure 40 feet away. It's difficult. There's not a lot of properties that there'd be a lot of space for.
Counselor Ricciardi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm also in favor of this. I didn't agree with excluding new detached structures originally. And I also would be interested in, so I would be interested in seeing a proposal of what including detached structures would entail, what that draft would look like, specifically to help alleviate adding those detached structures with setbacks that we know are not possible in most areas. I also do have some issues with the, right now, they can add it on an existing attached structure, but it has to go to the ZBA if it doesn't meet the setbacks, which the majority of existing detached structures do not meet setbacks, and it needs to go to ZBA, which is this whole process. So I would be also open to looking at that and some suggested edits there.
Anyone else first? Counselor Watsonfeld.
Thank you, President Marcello. I do not recall the specifics of that first version of the ordinance, although I do recall reading it. Were there also, and I think that this is part of the open questions, I would be interested in hearing that there were setback requirements around neighboring property lines as well? And then I have a question about the effect of adding large, you know, blocks of sort of concrete for foundations on otherwise grass-soft areas, and the effect on runoff and groundwater swell. So, and I only ask this because it is totally my personal experience, that we have a neighbor who has added a number of large-scale sort of shed units on their back. They have a lot of land. And it has affected the groundwater and how it swells up into my yard. And I just, and I remember, because of my position on historic Salem, I remember listening into these conversations, and that was a concern raised by a couple other neighbors in the more dense neighborhoods. And so I'm just curious if there's any, like, inspection around if that would be a negative effect, or how you would even measure that, or if, you know, I know it's not likely we're going to get like 50 in a dense neighborhood to come up, but what would the effects be? Like, is that looked at? Is that tracked at all? Thanks.
For the setback question, the affordable accessory dwelling unit, if it's in an existing detached structure, the requirement is, has to meet the setbacks that are required of a primary structure. So I don't know them off the top of my head, but I'll just throw out, let's say a zone has a 15-foot side yard setback requirement, and you have a garage that's five feet from the property line, that garage would need to go to the zoning board, because they don't meet the setbacks. And it's, as Counselor Ricciardi had noted, it's very rare for an accessory structure to meet those setbacks, but that is in the current ordinance. In terms of stormwater, our engineering department reviews stormwater for larger projects, so thanks, any site plan review that goes before the planning board, all of that's taken into consideration. They do for subdivisions as well, for those new single-family homes. So I think that's a bigger question of how we handle stormwater runoff for smaller structures, because there are absolutely ways to mitigate that. You can have low-impact development. You can include a rain garden. That's absolutely beautiful, without having those hard infrastructures to deal with the stormwater. So there are ways to deal with it. It's just, I think it's a bigger conversation than just this ordinance.
Counselor Varela.
Thank you, President Marcello. I just realized, didn't really follow up my question. So what I wanted to get at with the 40-foot setback, we want to incentivize residents to adopt an ADU. Would there be a compromise that an accessory dwelling unit could possibly be closer than the 40-feet setback, so the applicant wouldn't have to go through the ZBA, which is, you know, somewhat prohibitive and could hold the project up? Is there a way we can incentivize and be compromised with that 40-foot setback?
So I think you referred to the distance between the buildings requirement.
Correct.
And I don't, I don't recall what that is.
It's 40 feet.
Okay. Well, yeah, we could look at what the distance between building requirements are, and if we can, I mean, that's a local zoning ordinance. You do want to, we would want to involve the fire department, the building inspector, just to make sure that you have safety between those buildings, but it's something that we can look at.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Amanda. So I wanted to follow up on that large counselor's sort of initial question of what constitutes new, right? And I heard your response that, you know, essentially, everything that's created after the adoption of the ordinance is considered new. And so to my mind, that means that something that was created today, whether it's five years from now, or 50 years from now, or 100 years from now, will not be eligible to have an ADU created within it if it's a detached structure. Is that accurate?
If it's a, correct, that is accurate.
So I'm curious whether there was any consideration to, sort of what the Ward 7 counselor is talking about, consideration to the idea that there could be sort of a variance process created for properties, so that we don't necessarily have a detached structure that is considered new in perpetuity? Because I think the idea here, similar to the last matter we were discussing, is to not have property developers come in and say, "I'm going to plop two structures. I never plot that I can," just to make as many buildings as I can and increase the density. But we don't necessarily want to say, "Well, anybody who didn't exist before this happened for time immemorial now is excluded from being able to use these as accessory dwelling units." So I'm curious about exploring that track of solution, at the risk of angering everybody on the zoning board who already has quite long meetings, but, but yeah, I'd be interested in your feedback on that point.
Yeah, I wonder if that's something we could approach as, you know, revisit the ordinance after X number of years and determine if we should update the detached year. You could add language directly in there, but we might have a completely different climate in 10 years, in terms of our housing market. We just don't know. So it could be something that we just revisit.
Amanda, all this talk about the ZBA has me a little bit curious. What are the requirements in general to go before the ZBA, and what are the costs involved?
So an applicant would oftentimes say hire an attorney, not always, but it is pretty normal to hire an attorney to go before the zoning board, so those are a cost. There is a filing fee, which is nominal, but then the larger cost is the advertisement to the newspaper. It requires two ads to run in the paper, and it's quite lengthy, because we have to include all the code language in there. So those run usually around $1,000. Sometimes we can get it to $700. And so there's two advertisements that run, and then that's over a 14-day period. Then the applicant appears before the zoning board of appeals. If the zoning board approves it that night, then there's a 21-day appeal period. But just to get to the hearing, you know, the property owner has to notify all their neighbors, again, put this in the paper. So it's a very public process. And then you have that appeal period, and then if no appeals are filed, they can apply. So there's time associated with it, there's money associated with it. And when you're doing smaller things, particularly creating accessory dwelling unit, that may not be impactful for the neighbor, then it does open sort of a large process.
Do they have to have any additional plans?
The plans are not as in-depth as you would see at a planning board hearing, but they do need to have a plot plan.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Amanda. How are you going to get around zoning?
For what?
For accessory dwelling units, for a detached structure. If it doesn't meet zoning, then how are you going to get around it without altering zoning?
Well, which part of the dimensional standards?
Setbacks, side, rear, front.
Right.
I mean, the 40 feet between buildings, that's a number I'm not really familiar with. But I mean, obviously, side setbacks, and then obviously, an accessory dwelling can only be 18 feet in height.
Right. So you would need, we would need dimensional standards specifically for detached affordable accessory dwelling units.
Right.
That have its own set of standards.
So you said, I mean, obviously, if there's an existing structure on a piece of property that, as you referenced, mainly have a five-foot setback to the side yard, that is grandfathered in. So therefore, it's non-conforming, as you stated, but so because it's a non-conforming structure on an existing piece of property, then the only, the only avenue would be through special permit that they'd have to apply if they wanted to put a unit above the garage.
Correct.
So, I mean, I guess, so how would us changing this language without changing zoning? Because the underlying zoning's still intact.
Well, you could change the zoning for detached structures, have its own dimensional standards. So a detached, you could say a detached structure has a setback of 10 feet, or whatever it is. They could have, they could have different setbacks than the primary structure.
Okay. So because land use is regulated by zoning, and so then that recommendation would, would you, how would you, I guess I'd have to look at it more legally? Because how would you word it in such a way that you're not opening up a box for people to put up detached structures on an undersized piece of property, if they're not including accessory dwelling use in it?
I think the undersized property is going to be the largest barrier.
Oh, I, most lots are undersized for.
90% of the residential lots.
Easily.
And that's something that, I agree, I don't know how we would approach the lot, the minimum lot size. I have to think about that, because I don't know if you could change the minimum lot size for accessory dwelling units where.
Right.
I hear you.
Because that could open up a whole litany of other issues, you know, in addition to this. That's my only concern with it.
Yeah, I hear you. I think, and I think that's one of those things that I also think is a bigger conversation of, do the minimum lot sizes make sense in general?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Marcello. Through you to Amanda. So for my own clarity, again, so changing this with the recommendations in this letter that it can be detached, doesn't have to be an existing detached, it can be, changing it to the recommendation of it now allows a new construction for detached ADU, it would, with the current zoning, we could do that, but it would only be a very few number of properties that it would affect. And we'd have to do something larger if we were going to have that be allowable, you know, in a more broad sense.
Yeah, I think there are few people who would be able to do this by right. But if you allowed detached structures, it provides an avenue for a variance. And so it gives somebody the option to then apply for a variance for dimensional standards, where currently, the use of a detached structure is prohibited, and we do not allow use variances. So it, there's no way to get a new detached structure.
Okay, so for follow-up? Thank you. So this would create a path.
Correct.
Forward. So would, there would be something, and then they would just have to get a variance for the zoning, you know, distance and other thing, but it would open up the door.
It's a very difficult path, but it is a path.
But it would open a path. Thank you.
Counsel Watsonfeld.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Amanda, again. Follow-on question about, about variances in historic districts? Because I don't know how those two things work together. Is there any historic district restriction around land use for something like this?
It's two separate processes, where a variance from the zoning ordinance, that's all handled through the zoning board of appeals, and then a historic district, you know, all through the historical commission. So an applicant has to comply with both of them. If they receive approval from ZBA but not historical commission, they cannot move forward, and vice versa.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, next.
So this is a requirement that the electricity, water, gas, all utilities be on a single service. The purpose is to ensure that essentially, the property owner is not splitting the cost of those utilities, that they all be bundled together, because that, the max rent includes utilities in the ordinance. The concern we heard came from the city engineer, and they noted that they actually have a requirement that the separate buildings within the same parcel have their own water and sewer. So that's a requirement of our engineer. So it is impossible to do that under our current ordinance. And the staff recommendation then would be to allow for water and sewer to be separated, to make that modification. Also, the city engineer did note that they can create, one, they can merge the two accounts onto one account, the two meters onto one account. So that's something that we could require as an ADU is permitted if it is in a detached structure, that although it has its own meter, the accounts must be merged. So we're still achieving the objective, but doing it in a way that allows for the separation of meters.
Any questions? Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Marcello. I just want to state that that seems to make a lot of sense. It's just more of a comment than a question. Thank you.
Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, Counsel President Miller. I, when I saw this originally, I was pretty skeptical, because I do feel like having separate utilities. So there has to be some specific language to address what Amanda was saying, because it would be too easy to create an ADU with separate utilities and not have it eventually bounce into a separate unit. And I think that the utility aspect of the original ordinance is really important. So if it's just water and sewer, that's one thing, but really careful to have language that doesn't also affect heating or electric meters.
Counsel McLean.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Amanda. I think the suggestion of including language that simply specifies for the water and sewer service specifically, if it's a detached unit and separate meters are required, then they'll be required to merge the accounts, makes the most sense. I think that's a great suggestion. That would be sort of what I would look for, as opposed to entirely removing a mention of water or sewer, just kind of specifying for the scenario, I think, is the best road.
Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Amanda. I guess I'll have to talk to Dave Dalton about this, but if the intent is to create a unit that is affordable, you've just increased the cost astronomically by, by creating a situation where, depending upon what the location of this secondary unit could be, if it was closer to the street, and it just happened that the services were right there, that's one thing. But if it's farther back on the lot, say, say it's a situation where the garage sits back of the house, and the house is just in front of it, and the services come into the house, it'd be a lot easier to run a water service from the existing house to the detached structure, as opposed to running it all the way back to the street. So the cost could be inflated tremendously, and as you talk about, you know, as we all talk about developing affordable units, you know, once again, I'll put my builder's hat on, but the escalating cost of materials, labor, everything, anytime you put a burden on the development that requires them to do something that's going to be more costly, that just makes the unit itself more costly. So, I mean, I understand. So, I mean, I understand his intent because, you know, you know, if there's a water main break on your property, they want, they're going to go, they're going to go and shut the lateral down. And if there's only one lateral going into the property being for the main house, then they're going to shut the main house down. So if there was a, you know, a way that they jumped the water service in the main house to the accessory unit and the leak was in the accessory unit, that means they're shutting down the main house. I understand what the intent is, but it, the cost is just so much more depending upon, because each situation is different. It depends on the location on the property. So it's a conversation I'll have with Dave, but I, I appreciate it, but it just, you know, to bring in water and sewer into, to, into, into the same property is just, seems like, could be way cost prohibitive, especially if you're trying to create a unit that's going to be affordable. That's just my opinion, so.
Amanda, are these our engineering regulations or are these state regulations?
These are local regulations.
So they could change their regulation for ADUs?
Correct.
Okay. Noted. Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Marcello. As a follow-up clarity for my, for myself, this wouldn't mean that they have to have two water meters, would it?
The engineering requirement is that they would, if it's a detached structure, it would have to be two separate meters.
Okay, so this is saying they would have to have it?
If it's detached. If it's in the basement, it would all be one meter.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Anything left? Anything, look, anything else?
So those are all the concerns that I have heard, but again, since we're here and we're talking about this, if you have heard any concerns, I would love to hear them. If there's other suggestions you have, if there are members of the public who have concerns, again, or, you know, things that have been a barrier, I'd like to hear that as well.
So my question is, you also have a number associated with the number of permits that have been pulled but not returned?
We have about thirty-five applications that have been started, but they have not clicked submit. So there are people who have started the process for a building permit, but they haven't actually applied for it. So I reached out to all those people to invite them to the meeting tonight and ask if they have any comments to share. We've also shared the grant opportunity with them and hopefully they'll, they'll take a look at that. But I mean, we do see that there's interest and they're not moving forward and I'm, I, I want to understand why.
Okay. Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question kind of outside the scope of these items that were brought up was one of the hot topics that we talked about a lot were existing ADUs that were not on the books. Have we had any of those registered during the period of time that this has been allowed?
Yes, so several of, well, the, on the timeline I showed on slide number two, many of those permits were to legalize a unit that was built without the benefit of a permit. But of the permits issued since 2021, I, I'll have to take a look again to see if any of those were legalizing a unit.
Any other questions? Counsel Watsonfeld.
Thank you, having not been on the council at the time. How many do we estimate exist in Salem that may still be unpermitted then?
I do not have that number.
I do have a follow-on point. First of all, I want to thank you sincerely for the outreach to those people that had applied and not finished and inviting them tonight to the public meeting. I really appreciate that. Well done. Thank you for that. I commend that engagement. The next thing was you had asked if there had been concerns that I have heard. And the concerns that I have heard, you have also heard, but I will reiterate them now. In the density of the Ward Two area particularly and the historic neighborhoods particularly and the small lot sizes particularly, the concerns have been around the historic character. Obviously, you've heard that one in the past, but also this idea of like increasing density in already pretty dense neighborhoods. That concern clearly has not been founded yet with eight completed ADUs in our cycle, but, but I do continue to hear it. And so I just would, would continue to forward that feedback along to you. That, that anxiety point is very real for the downtown. Thanks.
Anyone else? Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Marcello. Throw you to Amanda. Just to clarify my notes, the, the grant that was established is for fifty percent of the cost for an ADU and what was the limit?
Yeah, so it's fifty percent of the cost to build or up to forty-five thousand dollars, whichever is less.
To forty-five thousand. Thank you.
And the rent requirement is it cannot exceed fifty percent of fair market rent for twenty years.
Exceed. Okay, fifty percent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel Watsonfeld.
Thank you. I swear this is my last question. With regards to the ADUs being seventy percent of the fair market rent value, what kind of renter engagement program is there or just renter rights awareness around that particularly? Because I think that unless you're asking for, and maybe you are, and I may be unaware of this, if you're asking for like annual reports of what is being, of what the income is based off rent for those units, I'd be curious to know how you're controlling that. Thanks.
Thus far, the ADU permits that have been pulled have been for family members where they send an attestation form on what their rent will be and it's zero dollars because it's a family member.
Anyone else? Okay, at this point, we're going to open it up to the public. If you're joining us over Zoom, you can use the raise hand function and if you're in the room and if you have a comment that you would like to address to us, you can approach the microphone. We're going to take a comment from in the room first. If you could just start by giving your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Derek Thomas. It's forty-eight St. Peter Street.
Okay.
Thank you. Cozy setting tonight.
You have to speak right into the microphone too. Thank you.
Got it.
Thank you.
So we are, I'm a builder, a design builder, general contractor, small-scale developer of mainly accessory dwelling units. We've built around a dozen or so throughout the state, Rockport out to Oxford. And I just wanted to bring along, because I, I came here maybe two years ago to speak on behalf of accessory dwelling units and as a proponent of them, so thank you for passing that. And just give you some numbers, as a small business owner, that I really only doing this as a, as a resident of Salem. I don't really go around the state doing this, so. There's a program called HubSpot, which kind of captures all my inbound leads. We have thirty-two contacts that have come in from Salem. Of those, about five or six site visits that have led to essentially no progress on them for issues surrounding land, the actual space, maybe it's a third-floor unit that just doesn't make sense financially or, you know, it's a multi-family unit that then would require fire suppression systems or below-grade egresses, it gets pretty expensive. Cost prohibit-, cost prohibitive. One was in, actually part of a condo association. I, I believe it unqualified them. And one or two more that are potentially planned for the future. We do have three that wanted to build a new detached. Two, I believe, would, were larger lots, one of which was in Witchcraft Heights, it was just too small of a yard. Wasn't possible. And then we have one that is in design right now and moving forward into the permitting process. And that's essentially, what I wanted to say is just, again, a, a, one, it, it takes a village, right? So there's all sorts of general contractors, builders, folks that are out there and again, out of the X amount that you have had permitted, in a way, sort of a middleman. You have the folks that have made this rule and allow the permits to happen and then you have a home builder, excuse me, a homeowner that may want to build it, still need somebody to build these things. So I'm just, again, one small piece of that pie and there's many builders out there that are apparently taking this on and obviously happy to answer any questions specifically that you might have.
Does anybody have any questions? Counsel McLean.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for coming in to, to join us and offer some comment. It's clear from, from your introductory comments that the majority of your contacts do not actually proceed to a working project, so if you were going to pick one or two items that are the major roadblocks, what are the most common? You heard that we had a lot of discussion around zoning, right? So if, for example, setbacks on a lot is their primary impediment, it'd be great to know that. So like what are the sort of one or two major obstacles that tend to derail these projects?
Well, from the zoning side, it really picks up when you start talking about detached to build new in an existing lot, which is sort of out of my purview. Two places that we have done that, which, again, if anybody's looking for guidance that, where it's worked well is Rockport. And Rockport has different zoning regulations for detached ADUs. They may have four or five different parts of town that allow or do, do not allow. Oxford, Mass. as well. We, we did two detached in those places. And then cost. So, you know, the majority of units that we have built have been in the city of Boston. Boston has a loan for fifty thousand. It's not a grant, it's a loan, zero interest, no payments on the life of the loan kind of thing. And our average cost to build is in the range of a hundred thousand for one, maybe two bedrooms in a basement without getting in a fire and lots of egresses or third floor kind of thing. It's about a hundred thousand. So hopefully, the grant here in Salem will have a pretty big impact as well. So, yeah, zoning and the cost, cost to do it. Again, just because somebody may want to build one, doesn't mean you can. I, I always go back to the garage thing. A garage is a garage. Doesn't mean you can just convert it into a habitable unit. There's a lot of other things that have to go into it. And then, real quick, the last few things I'll say that I picked up on, it's amazing this discussion, what everybody's covered. I was like, oh, maybe I'll bring this up. Nope. You guys have kind of already talked about it. Microunit, IRC, Residential Code, Section Q, it's about four hundred square feet or less is what IRC considers a microunit. I think the new codes that are coming out, they're actually going to have a, an entire section on accessory dwelling units. I don't know if, maybe the twenty-twenty-two code or twenty-twenty code that's coming out. And then the last thing which I'll leave with is, I, obviously, this is my business, accessory dwelling units and I follow it statewide, countrywide. The fact that Salem has sort of a registration list that is apparently certifying and being scrubbed is light years ahead of what most other municipalities, cities and states across the country are doing. Most just don't even acknowledge it, so bravo on that. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Steve Kapantus, who's joining us remotely. Let me sit back and make this happen.
Good evening. Steve Kapantus, twenty-three West Area Street, Salem, Mass. I have three questions hopefully you can answer. The first one is, can the presentation that was given tonight be made available on the City SharePoint website? My second question is regarding the forty-five thousand dollar grant. Is that going to be a deed restriction on the house? And then, oh, it's been a long day. I forget my third question at this point, so I guess I'll leave it at two.
Well, hang on and maybe after Amanda answers, you'll remember your third question.
Thank you.
Yes, the PowerPoint can be shared on the SharePoint and I'll also add it to imagensalem.org. And yes, the, the restriction will be on the deed, will be recorded at the Registry of Deeds.
Great.
For twenty years.
Excellent. I, I remember my third question now. I, I believe I heard that all ADU applications have been for family members, which would have been allowed under the previous ordinance. So my question is, how many ADUs have been allowed under the new ordinance that wouldn't have been allowed under the old ordinance?
I haven't done that analysis. I haven't looked at that. But I can take a look at it and report back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel McCarthy.
Just a quick, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick follow-up to that question. If someone takes on the grant and has a deed restriction and then ten years from now they want to sell their house, can they pay the grant off to get the deed restriction off their house if they want to sell it? Because, you know, maybe something happened, changed a job, changed a lifestyle, whatever. They decide they want to sell the house, but they don't want to sell it with a deed restriction. Can they pay it off in full? Is there a penalty for paying it off early? Or, just, just a curious question. If you don't have the answer for it tonight, that's fine. I was just, I was just curious. It was like, it was when I, when I heard it said twice, it was like, well, what if, you know, what if circumstances change and someone wants to, you know, move and now they have a deed restriction which may prohibit them from selling their home the way they want to sell it, so do they have the ability at that point to pay off, pay it off in full? I guess is my question.
We talked about this with the city solicitor and I don't recall the language in there, but we did discuss it being phased, so if it's, you had the restriction for ten years, then it's, you know, you still have ten years left, so you'd have to pay back ten percent of the grant. It is a grant, so you don't have to pay it back if you're there the full twenty years. But let me report back to you to see what, what ended up coming out in that restriction.
Any other questions from anyone? Counsel Dominguez, do you have any questions?
No, Madam Chair. Thank you so much. I don't have any questions.
Okay. Counsel McCarthy.
If there are no other questions, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I would, oop, go ahead.
Can I just make sure that I, I heard everything?
Sure.
What, what I, what my orders are moving forward. So in terms of the bedroom count, would the committee of the whole be okay with me drafting language that reduced, that took off the requirement for a two, a two-bedroom cap? Right now, the bed, the bedrooms are limited to two families. Could I? My question is, I want to work on revised language to bring, I can bring it back to the committee of the whole. But would you be comfortable with me working on language that removed the bedroom restriction, allowed detached structures, thinking about dimensional standards, taking that into consideration? And allowing for the utilities to, the sewer and the water to be separated on the same account, but specifically identifying that out? Those are the three things that I heard.
For the last one, I would also like to know if engineering could change their regulation.
And I will work with engineering to get that question.
I, I don't have a problem with working on the wording for those three things. And then reviewing it in OLA, that's fine.
Okay, I guess that would be my question, is do you want to leave it in the committee of the whole or do you want to move it?
I think if we start talking about reviewing language, it should probably go to OLA. But I, I would-
I would be more than happy to make that motion to my colleague to my left at her committee, take this on.
Unless people would rather discuss those amendments in the committee of the whole. I am flexible here. Counsel Watsonfeld.
Can we just co-post it so it's?
Oh, yeah, absolutely be co-posted, absolutely.
Thank you. Then that's all, then we're good with that.
And Counsel McLean?
I like keeping it in the committee of the whole because then everybody can make motions.
That's true.
That's true.
But then I would, I would just caution everybody that if we do that, then the, we, because there'll be ordinance changes potentially, then it would have to get, after it stays in the committee of the whole, then it would have to get referred to OLA. Maybe just for a quick review, but that, so that would just add another layer to it. But I do agree, that was one of the reasons why I always liked the committee of the whole is because it allows everyone to make motions and it allows everyone to have a vote. So you kind of know everyone's standing before, you know, leave. But so with that, I kind of agree with Counsel McLean. I move that the matter remain in committee.
Alternatively, this is just the report. So anything she, she submits would be in order to go to the committee of the whole-
This is correct.
-as a discussion on language.
It's because she didn't actually, it is just a report, so I, I guess, I guess my first motion would be, I guess we have to move to accept the report. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll take them backwards. I guess my, yeah, we'll close the loop. I guess my first motion would be to accept the report.
Okay, to accept the report- Okay, to accept the report, to send it back to the Committee to accept or just to accept here or what are we doing here?
Just here. Just so we have the report so it's on file.
All right. So Counselor McCarthy motions to accept the report, seconded by Counselor Prozniewski. And I will do a quick roll call here. Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
I lost my list. I'm going to make it up. Okay. Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Prozniewski?
Yes.
Counselor Ricardi?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfeld?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Did I miss anyone?
No. I am totally impressed that you did that from memory. I would have just gone down one side the other.
All right. What's the next motion?
My next motion would be that this matter remain in committee and that we meet when Amanda can come back to us to address the questions and concerns that were raised tonight.
Second.
So the motion is to remain in committee, seconded by Counselor Varela. And another roll call vote. Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor McLean? Sorry, Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Prozniewski?
Yes.
Counselor Ricardi?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfeld?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. So the matter carries 11 to 0. Any further motions? Is it kickoff time yet?
No, it's not kickoff time. I motion to adjourn.
Counselor McCarthy moves to adjourn. All those in favor? All those opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much, Amanda, for being here and walking us through all of this.